Second.
Okay, it's a move by Council Swafford, second by Councilman Boyce to approve Councilman Loftus's attendance electronically, if he makes it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries forward zero. Next item is the agenda.
I'll accept, or I move that we accept the agenda as published.
Second. Move by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Cebah, sorry. You approved the agenda as published. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries forward zero. Next item is the minutes from July twenty eighth.
I think we need to amend that we didn't ever mention that Councilman Cebah wasn't we have in there that we had made a motion for him to participate electronically and then he wasn't able to connect, so.
Okay.
We never mentioned that he
We did not.
Didn't attend.
Yeah.
So with that change, I move that we approve the regular town council meeting minutes for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
So second. And move to approve the amended minutes of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five by Councilman Boyce, second by Councilman Swafford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ep sentences?
Aye.
Alright, so that's three zero one. Alright, citizen concerns.
Why don't you do it? It might be on here, but you know, listening around, I think was really personal to most people, so I don't know if the town can get involved in that, but she would like to.
Well, we're not going to get involved in it, but we're not react, respond to it.
I've heard.
We can get involved.
Yeah.
Oh, could the town of Pinedale like purchase part of the paper?
Slight conflict.
Yeah, it's like Iran media, that sounds good.
It's like, hey, like, you didn't just say that.
Um, I was gonna say, uh, Peggy, I won't say who they were for obvious reasons, but given that I used to run the roundup years upon years ago, that's what brought me to Pinedale. Um, I had two people already within the last week hit, or a couple of days, hit me up about possibly purchasing, so. I put them in contact.
That's awesome.
No, not me doing it, although I might consult, but um, yeah, me, I've heard them personally talk to me for contacts, so. There'll be, there'll be something, I imagine, but.
Alright. Okay, any other citizen concerns? No? Alright.
I was kinda in between, so, sorry.
Council concerns? No? Alright, let's move on. I will mention, and I, this is the third time it's brought up, and I'll talk to Ed about it, but I've had actually youths come up and bring up the fact that we need to deal with e-bikes. So I thought that was interesting, but as the young people saying, when, one of these kids was about to take a left-hand turn and there's an e-bike passing him on the road and he was gonna take the left and he's like, Mr. Mayor, I'm like, yeah, you know, you're not wrong, so we should probably.
Taxes, they just, what, they pledged another forty-eight thousand for studies and education, and that's gonna get you about that for?
Yeah. Well, if we could just take advantage of our studies, I'm sure Mayor Jorgensen would share a study with us.
The state thing, I think it's, isn't it with the pedals, is where they draw the distinction, has a pedal and
Oh, I got now.
There's, uh, I've received a, from a good source, I received the state statute, basically. But yeah, I can go that too.
Yeah, dude, I could probably find it. Alright, next item is the consent agenda. Uh, this is the South County Hospital District temporary use permit application. That Foundation twenty-three days to raise separate use application to catering permit considerations, I'm asking to bring the license up from Green River, I think.
Green River and Appleton.
And this is just people who are related and so they know people.
I understand.
We're really trying, it's legally allowed, this will be the third, well, second and third time that we've done it. We don't encourage it because we'd rather the business stay with our guys, however, when they happen to be like friends with the people who own the facility, that makes sense. Uh, South GA apron FAA grant agreement, and then two encroachment agreements, which we have reviewed. If you have questions, we can talk about it briefly, or we can pull it out of the consent agenda. Pull it down, but, I'm sorry. Any questions? I'm assuming they're very reviewed, but. Very none, all in a family motion for the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Move by Councilman Cebah, second by Councilman Boyce to approve the consent agenda as published. Any further discussion? Very none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries forward zero. After the agenda's gone. All that work. All that work.
He's seventy-two.
Exactly. Alright, next item is the contract for services dispersment. We had their presentations yesterday, last time we talked, and so we need to determine, you'll see in there that we did have. We have it online, let's go to YouTube and watch it there. Okay, go to YouTube and watch there. Since you may be the only one interested. Alright, so I did ask Amy to complete the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, also, this is some of the notes that I had taken, so the the amount that they had received the previous year, do we know any of these amounts have changed? Because the county should have approved their budget already, and I don't, I didn't have a chance to look into that.
I did not see changes.
Alright, so anyhow, I am recommending that we do not provide money to Happy Endings since we already provide services to them. We do a lot of work with them in our animal shelter as it is, and staff, and animal hospitals, or so, giving them additional money. We only have sixty-seven thousand dollars available, and I would rather we focus on things that are like really pressing. So, open discussion, I can give you my ideas, or people can talk, whatever is easiest and best for everybody.
Feel like, as per usual, Rendezvous Point and Safe, I think are off the table for any cuts because of obvious reasons. I mean, we can have the conversation, but Rendezvous Point uses, uses what they have to leverage to get way more money than twenty, basically, every year. I feel like that we haven't changed that.
Maybe ever?
But it's never been more than twenty?
It's been twelve.
Yeah, it's been twenty for as long as I can remember.
Very long time.
And then obviously, I'm in favor of not touching Safe.
And I, I would also prefer, I mean, Pine Dell preschools amount is the same amount that they've been asking for years, and they give, what, thirteen scholarships to people in Pine Dell, so I feel like that's kind of, and Mesa.
And it's always very reasonable.
Yeah, exactly, so I, for me, I'm like, if we're gonna discuss any changes, I was looking at Children's Discovery Center, Children's Learning Center, and Pine Dell Aquatic Center. To be fair, they did receive money from the county, so I don't think they're gonna go out of business next year, but.
And you're not thinking going zero, you're thinking just a cut?
Yeah, I mean, I did the math where I just took what was left over, divided about how it would come out to almost a forty percent cut for each of them. But I don't know if people, I go there and I can throw numbers out, people would like.
Was the funding, I was under the impression, at least with some of these, the funding that the county gave was for capital construction, is that true, or was that just general operating?
Yeah, some of it was for county construction, I mean, I think, I'm not, to be honest, I don't know exactly all the streams that the county attached, but so.
I don't love cutting the learning center by that much because of the nature of their work with where they're providing screenings and things for the whole, all the children, so, and the services that are not affordable to anyone if they don't provide them.
Yep. So I mean, this is a year where we're gonna probably just have to, some of them are gonna be cut, and it's, you know, it's just the way it is, we have a limited budget. I will say that there is active discussions for this budget session of changing the distribution of sales and use tax from sixty-nine thirty-one to sixty-one thirty-nine. A whole eight points, which, I forget how much we figured that was, but not a, not a shabby amount, probably won't stay there. But there is also discussion that we're leading. Parenthetically, everybody knows I'm the president of WAM, so I'm leading the one charge on this, so we make a permanent fifth penny, and I did get a phone call from a representative of the county, he was asking if we would be okay with going to a fifth penny because they realized that they couldn't do industrial siting without it. So that would probably, possibly, if the legislature does it, it's done, if the county decides to do it, it would be on the, it would be on the ballot for twenty twenty-six. It wouldn't impact us until the following fiscal year. If the legislature did it, then it would take effect probably July. Which, there's a number of cities.
Retractively July?
No. Next July, okay, yeah. And then, there's just a number of community communities that are tired of having to re-vote on the fifth penny every single year. And then, just as a brief summary, the fifth penny would ninety-nine percent stays within the county, and where the current sales and use taxes, I said earlier, it's sixty-nine thirty-one, no, it's actually yeah, sixty-nine goes to state, thirty-one goes to local, so if we ended up getting a fifth penny, we would double our budget on the sales and use tax. Which would be significantly, be another one, one point two million dollars that comes in, so we could in the following year possibly re-increase our giving again, so. Anyways, all that to say is, there is, there, it seems that there are sunnier, sunnier days ahead of us. I don't know how sunny, whether it comes with a little bit of rain or not. All that to say is, I, you know, we have, we have a budget that's balanced right now, it's the three percent that we've already indicated. I'm happy to keep. I, in my mind, we have to focus on the ones that get the most bang for the buck, and if you will, the most. What I'm looking for. The ones at the greatest risk.
So if we keep safe and rendezvous point, sorry, just keep us moving.
Good, I appreciate that.
If we keep safe, rendezvous point, and did we kind of somewhat agree on Pinedale preschool, like going bottom up here?
Yeah.
That those were pretty much static?
And Mesa.
Mesa.
And Mesa, I mean Mesa, they requested ten, they got ninety-five hundred last year.
Right, I mean, we could get, whether we give them last year if we wanted to, but.
Yeah, I feel like it sends a wrong message if we actually increase, and that's coming from someone who absolutely adores Mesa and everything they do. But I mean, ninety-five hundred there makes sense, too.
Okay, I agree.
If we're gonna keep, if we're gonna make those cuts, it doesn't seem like we should be getting more. Some money, or in, you know.
Alright, that means we have twenty-five thousand dollars left over, or, or the, and then we keep Happy Endings at zero. And then that would mean, if we decided to favor the Learning Center because of the early screening.
That, and the fact that they, they offer free therapy.
Keeping the Learning Center same as twenty-four, or give them ten thousand, I can tell you what that number would be, ten thousand drops us to fifteen thousand.
For PAC and Children's Learning Center.
There's a big cut. There's a big cut, somebody's gonna have to be cut.
Way it's gonna be, and I hate it because, because with the towns going to a four-day school week.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Aquatic Center is gonna be important, too.
Well, all of them.
These are all important.
Other preschool, some of the preschools are offering it out on Friday for older kids, too.
No, I get it, this is hard, you know. Just wait, you're gonna have a big bucks for everybody.
Yeah, I will just say, I like doing this better when we're doing the full budget, when we can look at what else we might be able to cut instead.
What are you left with between?
At fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine, if you give ten thousand to Children's Learning Center.
Smash of a cut to the Aquatic Center, though.
And to the Discovery Center.
Yep.
Yeah, at this point, they're both locked in, it's pretty nasty.
Well, and the thing with the, the other thing to know about PAC is they, they have a hard time finding anywhere else to get the money because they don't, like, the county doesn't give them money other than through the rec board, and that's always supposed to be just for tangible items, and so it doesn't cover any of the programs or anything. And they're in this weird setup to where it's hard to qualify for grants and things as well.
If you, if you split up what's left between the two, what's left, what you have?
Seven and a half thousand.
Seventy-five hundred, ugh. It's two of the three bigger ass that we didn't even give half to.
I mean, again, I did see a lot of my friend counties, some of them might be capital restricted, but you know, that they have some funds reserves. So like I said, this is not gonna be, they're all gonna suffer, but this is not a key decision that closes any of them, so.
So hypothetically, you could say. You dropped Learning Center down by two to eight?
Learning Center from two to eight? Eight thousand?
Because you have it at ten now, right?
Ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, Learning Center, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Drop that a smidge, then that allows you to pull up the other ones.
Now it's seventeen more, six, and then if you wanted to, you could go and give, uh, the Aquatic Center, sorry. I was just like, for somebody going to corrections, you could give them ten thousand, and you could give seven thousand, so you can do the other, or you can give.
Yeah, I think that's a decent spot to work with, if you were in a trade-off back and forth.
I guess my question is, at the end of the day, and I, this is not a fair question, but which one is more critical? The Pine Dell Aquatic Center or the Children's Discovery Center? And I mean, feels like the Aquatic Center is picking up a lot of kids. Both on.
Yeah, but I feel like it just, I don't wanna disproportionately smash, you know?
No, I know.
Discovery Center or Learning Center, either one, which is why it's difficult to do this.
Yeah, that's my problem with it, too, it's, there isn't a way to come up with a good number.
The only thing I can say is, I, no one's going out of business with whatever we give them, and if the, if it is rosier or sunnier next year, I don't want to say we can make up for it, but we can at least give them the full ask, possibly, you know, if things work out well.
Yep. I mean, it's difficult, I mean, and just again, it's one of those things, is people can ask for a lot of money, but if you just don't have it in the budget, so.
Mr. Mayor, what do you have right now for numbers for these, everybody?
Well, I have seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents left for the Children's Discovery Center and the Pine Dell Aquatic Center. You could break it up to eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred, or eighty-five and eighty-eight.
I mean.
And we have Children's Learning Center at eight thousand instead of their half, so.
I was just more or less just trying to get it to a number where it seemed relatively even for the other two.
I mean, if we're I know we're trying to do this, equitably is the right word, but I think we should, we should look at rendezvous point, too, and I'm not, at least cut some of that.
If you do that, they risk not getting their large grants.
But they have money, they have two hundred and five from the county.
Yeah.
And they can leverage money from another public entity. Because they could, they could, any of these entities can make that argument if they're leveraging grants, rendezvous point just makes that point here.
Yeah, but they specifically used the ten thousand.
It just feels like we're overly penalizing some of these other critical services and asking the same from rendezvous point.
I, you know, just to be the devil's advocate, you have one service here that serves the seniors, and one, two, three, four, five that serve the youth.
With a very long waitlist on all four of them.
I agree, but you have a number of seniors who, I mean, you have one, you have one service here that's helping the seniors, and the rest are helping the youth, which, they're all important, but I'm not saying diminishing any, but that, I know that rendezvous point makes a lot of needs of a lot of our senior services.
No, and I, I agree, I'm just thinking from the non-profit side of this, you know, for making small cuts to all of these instead of somewhat larger cuts to the PAC or the Discovery Center, those smaller, those smaller gaps are easier to make up collectively.
I personally don't like cutting rendezvous point. It's just difficult because the three percent puts us in a bind, and hopefully in the future, three percent does us some good, but that's why every time that came up on the budget, I mentioned it, but, because I don't love it either, because I think three point three percent would have been fine, and obviously, everyone's happy with cuts, but three point three is not three, so.
That's right, and we all.
And not two, like it was originally, by the way, we did get. But yeah, we have to do something, so, can't stalemate this one.
Well, my only absolute don't touch it is Safe.
I, I'm okay with that.
And like I said earlier, Pine Dell preschool specifically, they're asking for four, that seems silly, too.
I, I have a hard time cutting them because they've always been, to me, one of the most reasonable asks. It's always been the same amount, and that goes directly to helping the kids attend, who wouldn't be able to afford to.
I mean, I go back to, I mean, you can try to share things around, but at the same time, we have prioritized, and I go to, your Safe, your, your, your rendezvous point, and your Mesa are the most at-risk people who are struggling the most. Yeah, the Aquatic Center, which probably is gonna wrestle with the most number of people, that's gonna probably, that's gonna have your most bang for buck. And then you're left with the Learning Center, which I think, to your point, is the thing, so, anyhow. I would favoritize the Aquatic Center over the Discovery Center, just for what it's for.
You're not saying drop any of them to zero?
No.
Yeah.
Other than Happy.
Have you had a discussion with Happy Endings about that?
We, uh, no, I haven't, because when they first applied, I was like, I don't think we're terribly inclined to give you, because we already do an MOU, we do an MOU, we do service, we take care of their animals, we do other things. So we don't provide the service to any of these others.
And that one, too, is interesting, because if you actually tallyed up town staff time dealing with them.
That's right.
It might be more of an in-kind donation rather than money, but. Also, to be fair, they didn't ask last year, and we didn't say, well, if they did ask last year, we didn't pay out this year.
Well, and to be, to be doubly fair, I'm sorry, I'm gonna prefer people over animals. I love my animals.
You said it.
People know it, but I'm gonna not that the animals don't need the help, and they taking care of them helps everybody else on other multiple fronts, so please don't twist that, but I do think it comes down to it.
There's an MOU to be had there anyway.
Yeah.
Seems redundant, give money and MOU. Like, we don't give money to agents now and an MOU.
That's right.
I do feel like there was a year when we were a little less on rendezvous point, even though they had asked for twenty.
We do like an eighteen or something?
It's something like that, it's been a few years.
You wanna cut them, go ahead and propose to cut, go for it.
Well, I'm just making the point that you had said we hadn't, and we have in the past, I just, I wish we knew what they, how much they needed for the leveraging.
Well, they do, that's in their request.
Yeah.
I mean, do you have that handy, I was just looking for it, so. Yep.
We've been on.
It's on last year, and I just didn't have it pulled up.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did Happy Endings buy that place there right now? Because they were at Suzy's house, so they, they weren't paying rent, I think. So I don't know if they want that, I just was curious.
I don't know, I'm trying, uh.
He knows.
I think it was donated, somebody.
Well, they didn't buy it, they went, it's been
It's done.
So they were in.
It's a donation, essentially, right?
Oh, that's very, very, very.
Close to that.
They were giving another location on South Pole.
Yeah.
And they needed to move, the lease being sold or something, so.
Well, they wanted more space, and they needed to pick cages and stuff like that, so we've already had discussions of putting cages in our place for them as well, so there's a lot of barriers.
I laid out exactly how they used the twenty.
Yeah, yeah. There's a couple, they actually have what they have in reserves, and.
The reserve situation is the only reason that I was, I don't know, not as argumentative as usual. So I'm usually a pretty big proponent of this program, but.
And that's the hard thing, right, because we're, we're a big proponent of all of the programs, and none of us wants to cut any of them, and that's what makes it hard.
Well, it looks like ten thousand goes to secure a thirty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Transportation, Rural Transit.
Yes.
And then the additional five, it gets another fifteen thousand, so they're using fifteen.
And then five goes to the contribution for allocated various expenses for health and wellness programs.
Okay, so fifteen of the twenty are being used for a match.
Right.
Okay.
What's up, leave us with now?
What are we doing?
Just where it currently is.
Well, if we left the rendezvous point at twenty, we put, I just plugged in eighty-three hundred for Children's Discovery Center, and nine thousand for the Aquatic Center, we have sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents left. Or you can cut rendezvous point and give more to the other group.
I feel like I could live with any of those choices, the, the reason I was thinking maybe rendezvous point would be okay to cut is because I feel like the county would step in if need be for that one, more so than any of the others. May not be true, but.
And if we cut five out of the, of rendezvous point, they still have the ability to get those matching funds, which is what we seem to be most concerned about?
I don't know that we need to cut all of it, all of that five, because it does, the program is important, too, but.
Yeah.
But a token decrease, I think, to Scott's point, is, is a good idea.
I would consider, but anyhow. I just looked at the number of people that helped, again, but.
Well, I think all of these places help a lot of.
And none of these are, none of them are really apples to apples.
I mean, if you, if you go numbers, you're probably looking at the Aquatic Center having more impact than anywhere else.
But again, I come back to, if we're gonna help, then I would like to, like, just give a certain portion to the age of the park community. And, and helping all the others, I mean, the PAC, yeah, there's some people taking that, but as you wanna, as you want, you go.
Well, I mean, don't make it sound bad, I'm, I'm talking about like a, a ten percent decrease for rendezvous point, where you're talking about a forty percent de- decrease for the Discovery Center or something like that, and I, I do think there's probably room in the Discovery Center budget that they can handle taking less because they do a lot of extras and a lot of programs, that they could probably get private funding for that if they wanted to continue them, but, I mean, I have a hard time, I've, I've benefited from almost every one of these, and, and I, I just really have a hard time piddling over these tiny amounts when we have, you know, bigger things in our budget that we could. You know, bigger things in our budget that we could have cut, had we looked at this at the same time as doing this.
Same time, I'm going to come back to is we've dedicated three percent of our revenue to this. And I know that's going to, we don't want to open this can of worms, but that's another fight in line that we've drunk multiple times over multiple years. So we have a lot of things going on in the budget and a lot of things have to get done.
I know, and I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't cut at all.
I know, I'm just saying that contract for services becomes one of the more contested areas within our budget for a lot of citizens, so. I think we're here to do roads, water and sewer, so, yeah. I think quality life. Hey, to be very fair, councilman, I'm the one that bought to get this funded way back in the day, so. It's, uh, this is something that I actually started long time ago, so I'm in the, I'm in the mean chair right now. Cause I'm hoping everybody speak to the party to stay within the budget, but anyways. So if you want to cut two thousand for rendezvous point, how much do you want to give to the others?
What do we have the others at?
I have eight thousand, three hundred and nine thousand.
Nine thousand for PAC?
Nine thousand for PAC, eight thousand, three hundred for the discovery center.
I guess I'd put that two with the aquatic center.
Make it eleven thousand with the aquatic center. And then eight thousand, three hundred and thirty, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine for the discovery center.
It's hilarious, like, and as it deals with the numbers that you remember.
Three percent of what the revenue was.
Yeah.
Is that what you want it to be?
There are no good answers.
I know.
That's the situation that we're in. There aren't any good answers in the whole thing. Cause you could almost argue that like we could drop Mesa to eight K, get fifteen hundred back, but, but where's that going to go then? I think it's, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? So.
Well, and I, I, I think it's smart to, to cut the ones that have the bigger asks because there's more leeway within those programs than some of these little programs that. It would really hurt, so. I, I don't love the, that there's such a huge drop for the discovery center. But at the same time, they're asking for more than they did last year, so if you look at last year's numbers, it's a little different.
And the county number off the side is, I would say it's a little bit helpful so that you can be like, they can find another.
That's true. Can you read through your numbers for everybody?
Children's discovery center, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Children's learning center, eight thousand. Here, happy endings, zero. Mesa, nine thousand, five hundred. Pineville Aquatic Center, eleven thousand. Pineville Preschool, four thousand. Rendezvous point, eighteen thousand. Safe, eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Total of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars, seventy cents.
So I'm okay with that.
I, I can live with that. I don't think changing a thousand here or there is really going to make that much difference. This point.
All in our case of motion.
You need all of those numbers in.
Just going to say so, just thinking you just like that.
Did you get them all?
Okay.
And you got the sheet there.
I did, yeah.
All right. I move that we accept the numbers we've just discussed.
Second.
All right. Moved by Councilwoman Boyce, seconded by Councilwoman Cosiva, to award eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, seventy cents to Children's Discovery Center, eight thousand dollars to Children's Learning Center. Nine thousand, five hundred to Mesa, ten thousand or eleven thousand to Pine Aquatic Center, four thousand to Pineville Preschool, eighteen thousand to rendezvous point. And eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to safe for total sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye. I propose motion passes for sales. All right. Did you get, you got those numbers? Do you need me to email them to you? Cool. All right. Next item on the agenda is our Pineville Airport New Hangar project update and discussion. A. What's going on with Chelsea there?
Probably not the best one. Mr. Mayor and Council, the packet before you contains kind of map and a schedule. So in the meeting mix from our kickoff meeting last week with the, with the airport hangar project. To recap, um, the design scope is for a hundred, but a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty hangar. Now that is kind of waiting a visit from the state fire marshal's office in two weeks to go over some options for fire suppression and some different things on that building. And different options to try to avoid that since we don't have a good water source that year. Um, I wanted to bring it before you because the next steps in the process is once we get past the state fire marshal's office. Is to, um, have a conversation about a C Mar, which is a construction manager at risk contract and a procuring of a C Mar contractor. So, um, that process, um, will be approved by the FAA, by Y Y NOT. I wanted to present it to you guys because in the next month or so, we will be going up forward here and of selecting that contractor. That contractor comes alongside the engineering team and helps design the building as a constructible building. Uh, at the end of the day, before we go out to bid, um, that contractor can, we can certainly terminate that contract and be done with that contractor. Um, but he's also welcome to bid on that contract, um, kind of has a bidding process. This, the goal of this is to manage risk and to save costs and non-destructibility and other things that comes with kind of having a package deal, if you will. It's just a little trickier for a given process, having federal, state and local funds all tied together. We need town council's approval at some point to go out for a C Mar solicitation. I would welcome that motion today, um, because I think the FAA and Y Y NOT are going to have much stricter standards in the town of Pineville when it comes to advertisement and statutory warrants.
It's absolutely the best.
So, yeah, so the recommendations that we approve a C Mar this evening. And then that gives us the ability to immediately kind of work. And I think you forgot to mention, but the goal could, the possible result could be is this hangar could be constructed by, by November of next year. So we're moving this thing along fairly quickly. I suggest it be done by next summer, but eight kind of after.
I'll do my best.
That man's reached to exceed his grasp.
I feel like it's better to set the expectation.
That's true.
Than exceed expectations.
There you go. There you go, over deliver, that's right, okay. That means I can't see it in July. All right.
I mean, sure.
Can, can, right?
Could see it next.
Any, any questions about this hangar?
This is the one we were talking about for a while.
This is going to be a hot potato when it gets built. So if everybody is agreed, I would entertain a motion to approve, let's see, put it up for a proven C Mar contract.
Yeah, I think it'd be like approved the procurement process for a C Mar.
Obviously nothing's going to be signed until we have everything done, but.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the procurement of a C Mar, which is a construction manager at risk, um, for the, for the project of.
Pineville Airport New Hangar.
Yeah, a new airport hangar.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Swappert, seconded by Councilwoman Boyce to approve the procurement of a C Mar contract. Uh, for the Pineville New Hangar at the airport. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion carries forward. All right. Next item is the one that Peggy and Callie are super excited to listen to. Uh, newspaper of record discussion and possible action. I think for what it's worth, uh, I was in Evanston last week and legislation was being passed. And the legislation specifically called out notification to newspapers and somebody said, hey. This may not work. And so, yeah. Anyhow, um, Callie, I'll let you speak in a moment if you like. As we know, we all got the news at the roundup and the news media corporation was closing. Um, we did get an email this afternoon from Rob Mortimer, who had said there's a group at foot to make a purchase. There are certain things that have to be checked for that to be a, to the newspaper of record. Um, I asked that he would send a letter suggesting he would do this. I don't see him being able to do it, quite honestly, until they have new owners and are operating again. So we do have some documents prepared to designate what we could, could consider just an interim newspaper of record. There are things that we can put onto the website. There's other things that we have to advertise in all these three different locations. The county on Friday should have called a special meeting and they selected the Rocket Miner. A little bit of discussion back and forth there on how that was chosen. But they agreed that the Rock, Rock Springs Rocket Miner was probably the closest logically to Suffolk County. That Jackson Hall News and Guide, not a lot of those papers sold, sold here. The Rocket Miner actually has at least four hundred subscriptions within Suffolk County. So that seemed to be, if you will, the most related paper to Suffolk County. Does that make sense?
Is that like four percent? I think that's.
Yeah. So whatever, I.
Quick math.
I, I, we had some active discussions in that meeting and I was giving my counsel. In the process of that, the Rock Springs Rocket Miner also offered a lower price. The Star Valley Independent, um, I did ask Amy to go and get some prices. So to be very clear, I'm not considering this looking at the prices. I'm looking at what is the closest that serves our community. The, the county has chosen the Rocket Miner. I would recommend we choose the Rocket Miner and have everything in one place. And I kind of agree that the Rocket Miner is probably closest to Pineville than the others. Um, but the Star Valley Independent, to be clear, did say there was seven dollars and fifty cents that it became their record, their paper of record. So there was a lower price there. I don't, what are we paying for the roundup just out of, since we have a pricing for everybody else? How much are we paying for?
How much was?
Callie knows.
Eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents for college.
Okay. So. Excuse me. Eighteen seventy-five?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we've had this discussion, um, several times. And I know I've had it and I know Callie and I have talked and it's very frustrating because I think the Pineville roundup was probably doing the best amongst the. Association of Papers, um, and they ended up going through a series of actions that just slowly stripped the roundup down. Kudos to, you know, Robert for still reporting on sports from Torrington. That's dedication, right? Um, and Callie's been working hard. So anyhow, um, my recommendation tonight is that we go with an, we would just do a designation of the Rocket Miner. That could, and, and I was suggesting an interim where we would have a phrase in such a way that if the roundup got their act together before the next council meeting, we could pivot it, but.
I think we could, we could pivot at the next meeting and still not be a problem. Uh, and I, I guess we have to, the statute says shall designate a little newspaper, so you have to do that. It also says that if it's not published in the town, then you can do, well, you do certain other steps. You post it in, in the clerk's office, one other place that the clerks decide to do that. We can, we can do that for this meeting because the only thing that has to be posted are the minutes.
That's right.
And we have an ordinance coming up. The ordinance is a little different because it says that if it's not open for business, then you can post it. You have, it, it's more strict, not just published. The paper has to have an office open where they can accept advertisements and people can go there.
That's what I want, yeah.
And let go of them.
So I think there's some, there's some cleanup that's going to happen, but for the interest, um, of just making certain that we do have a paper of record. You know, my recommendation is we go with the Rocket Miner. If something happens with the good folks at the roundup, and I'll let you speak in a second, then hey, that's great. Love to have it back at home, um, but I do think we have a shall that we need to, to respect. So there are certain things that we don't have to do, which are, yeah, which can save us some money, but go for it.
Um, sorry, uh, how quickly can we then swap that designation? Like, could we just as easily in the next meeting turn it back?
Yep.
We will have a public hearing notification asked throughout this week.
Yeah.
So there's a few things in this territory that we are.
Required to do.
That's right.
So we can't just sit on this and hope that it works out in the next week. Callie, would you like to say anything? I want to make sure your voice is heard. Not at all. Come up front, get in front of the camera. You can be a YouTube star, so wave at everybody.
Well, she is on YouTube.
Other goals I have ever done, for Zee Council, my name is Callie O'Hare. I'm the managing editor of the Pineville Roundup. For those who don't know me, grateful for your time this evening. I just wanted to come before you tonight to reaffirm my commitment to the town of Pineville, to Suffolk County, our communities, our readers and advertisers. On the morning of August sixth, your Wyoming journalists and media professionals took up a fight to bring our community newspapers back home where they belong. Through the weekend overnight, from our home offices across the state and even my hospital bed. We have pushed forward because you deserve nothing less than our exhaustive efforts. The Pineville Roundup and Wyoming Newspapers Inc. have taken steps toward resuming operations. I was back in the office today building this week's paper. As we await word of a potential sale that we expect to go through this week. We are vowing to preserve this legacy newspaper's longstanding role as Suffolk County's official newspaper of record. Although I cannot publicly share all the details yet, fingers crossed by the end of the week I will. I want you to know the depths of our commitment to continuing to serve you. I've always said that good community journalism could not exist without the communities we serve. And that sentiment has never been more clear in my mind than it is right now. We're so grateful for the outpouring of support from the folks here in Suffolk County and across the state. This Thursday, an eight-page edition of the Pineville Roundup will appear on newsstands. I built it today. It contains updates on our operations as well as the town of Pineville's current legal notices, among others. And we just ask our readers with current subscriptions to hold on to those and wait for a future announcement that's expected to come soon. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Okay, council?
Does that meet the criteria?
No.
No.
And you guys, but, but you guys know that.
Yeah, but I think what's, I think what is important, one is you're maintaining a public. We can, we can smudge that fifty-two week thing a little bit, but good on you for like staying within the letter of the law. So I appreciate that. That makes our job a little bit easier.
Of course, yeah. Um, and I just basically wanted to just reassure you guys that we'll be back up and running soon.
Great. Ed, do you have any questions for Callie?
No, the quicker the better, I bet.
You're telling me.
Two sets of legals from district court that I've kind of been living below.
I hear you on that.
I think this, I mean, I think people forget, um, I mean, every district has to publish. The sheriff's department was going on about all the different things that they, that people who come to them have to publish. So this is a major inconvenience now.
School board too.
Right. So.
School districts, absolutely. The law offices, everyone who wants to change a name, probate, you need to keep it.
To be fair, and just, uh. I know that there's probably going to be renewed legislation to change the actual physical paperwork. And I am not a part of that, just to be very clear. Sorry if I missed one time, uh, but I know that when I was in Evanston, that came up back again and people were like, that needs to be done, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a member of the Wyoming Press Association Legislative Committee, so.
Right.
It's on my radar, yes.
Just put that on there, um, so whoever is going into the first thing, because that could become law, so.
Yeah.
Anyhow, any other questions for Callie?
I don't have any questions. I think the approach of going to the Rocket Miner in the interim and then as soon as the roundup is able to check those boxes. I would be in full support of bringing our cows back home, so to speak.
Okay, great. And all I can say is, Callie, thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Sorry that hit you so suddenly and out of the blue and.
We're, we're sorry for our community. We know that you guys deserve better and, and we're going to do better for you. We're looking at bringing this back with local control, independently, independently operated without the corporation's involvement, so we're very excited.
That'd be nice.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Wish you the best. If you have any questions, we need help, love them.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Ed, you prepared two resolutions, which were not included in this, and I have somewhere, I think I downloaded both. Do we need to do both resolutions?
One would be if you just wanted to meet the bare minimum of designating a label newspaper. You could, um, put the verbiage that.
The designation of.
Designation for, and it's for these reasons that we designated a paper. It's not printed in, in the county, uh, it doesn't have an open office here, which the two statutes. I don't know, they diverged, they diverged. And then it directs the county clerk in order to comply with those two statutes to take those actions to set out there. One posted in her office and then I just had posted in the lobby of the county hall.
I was telling, yeah. And I was telling the clerk that we shouldn't put it in the lobby, that we should at the best put it in the entranceway. Just because I think one more door, door in to be. just because I think one more door in could be hard for people to see. So if we just.
There's one out there right now.
I know. Yeah, it's on the, it's in, it's in the, it's visible from the foyer, not the foyer, but the vestibule versus the foyer.
That doesn't have to be, I know.
I know, but I, I've been involved in a situation where there was a public notice behind two closed doors and all of these were glass that was still complaining about it. So I will take one closed glass door as opposed to two glass doors.
Also posted on the board at the library.
That's right. So, so I would agree that we go with the resolution designate and the designation and posting for right now. Just to kind of get everything cleaned up. If something happens and they pull it out of the fire, fantastic. If not, we have, we're covered.
Yeah, we'll move to the next two weeks or next week, hopefully sooner.
That's right. Or next six months, right? So what, however, this is the solution. So this is a resolution designating a legal newspaper. The key items are the Rocket Miner would be how we read it. It's hereby designated the legal newspaper for the town of Pinedale. That would correspond with the county. And again, I point out that that was not based on price. That was based on another decision matrix. And then two, as the Rocket Miner is not published in the town of Pinedale and does not maintain a physical office of which advertisements are accepted and which is open to the public during regular set business hours within the boundaries of the town of Pinedale, the town clerk of the town of Pinedale shall post the proceedings and ordinances as required by State Statute 15110 and 151116 for at least 10 days in the town clerk's office in the lobby of the town hall on the town and on the town website. So if everybody's good, what resolution number would this be?
This would be 2025-12.
Okay, so this will be Resolution 2025-12 Designating the Rocket Miner. I will go ahead and edit this and then report it back to you. Any questions from council? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-12.
Yeah?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by council on my voice, second by council of Casiba, to pass Resolution 2025-12 Designating the Rock Springs Rocket Miner as the paper of record for the town of Pinedale. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Always going to add a caveat there. We'll be gone.
And then hopefully everything gets worked out. It would be reverse.
That's right. So. All right, I will. Send this on to you.
If we keep the template on hand.
Yeah, good point. Give me one second. I saved it, I'll send it back. All right, next item on the agenda is the proposed deed restriction template. Again, this is, there are two things going on. Ed and I have worked on this back and forth for some time. And we've also worked with the two owners. Is this the latest one that has the additions that I made or is this?
Yes.
It's the last one.
The one that you amended as of like.
Friday. Yeah, Friday, okay. So this does have the input of the two landlords that are, and owners who are currently developing property. The follow-on item is the NC Construction LLC deed restriction. This would be us then, one approving the same template, which we have, what we proposed to others. And then this would be the one that Mr. Goodrich's company would operate on. This then gives him the ability to move forward on the variance at the next meetings or when they're available, so. So are there any questions on this deed restriction? As I said, this is a labor of.
Does it authorize him to move forward on a variance or building permit?
It would allow me to issue the variance and then we're working with the market. But it would then allow, my understanding is once the variance is in place, we can actually process the bill.
Only thing that I was curious about is under number five B, I believe.
This is the one that we edited on.
It allows them to rent a room to someone else. I just, I'm not sure how I feel about that. It just seemed surprising to see it there.
Yeah, this was both a request of the developers and also of use another deed restrictions. Don't forget, this is a deed restriction that's going to be permanently on this property. So, you know, the idea was to make it broad enough so that the market could do what the market needs to do while at the same time protecting the interest of having affordable housing. So it was, it's a, it's a, I want to say it's a broad brush, but there is like, okay, a qualified resident may lease a room or rooms in the property to one or more persons provided that the qualified resident still continuously occupies the property as his or her personal residence, so.
And the other people who end up renting from them also have to be qualified residents, is that correct?
And anybody who is not, so the way it's worded and Ed, I want to make certain that this is the right one. I feel like we've worked five.
It was five C, wasn't it?
No, hold on. I have in the last two weeks worked on documents that have gone back and forth between so many writers. I'm sick of this. And then we forget which one we're working on and then it's like projects of affordable housing. Three C is what we edited.
One C and three C.
One C and three C. So one C is, and it's a qualified household, so there you go, that's your point. So one C has it that, for example, a married couple, really, we're only looking for one of them, right? But if it's not a non-family member, then all the members have to call. All the unrelated individuals sharing, you know, each document must individually qualify as a qualified resident. So in other words, for him to sublease that to another person, they also have to qualify.
Right, and we don't have a definition of qualified resident. It just says qualified resident is defined by resolution by Pinedale, which is not, we need.
It's going to be defined by the commission and then approved by the.
Okay, but.
Qualified resident.
One D.
One D.
Says qualified resident is defined by resolution by Pinedale.
Should be counted by the town.
So.
Yeah, it should be by the town.
But I, I was wondering if we have, do we have that written out yet? Do we know what that is?
We don't, because that will be part of what the Housing, the Housing Commission does and then proposes back to the town council to be approved.
Okay.
And considering that we are probably a little ways out from somebody actually leasing one of these buildings, we didn't feel that we had a difference. And I've already been discussing with some of the people who are involved in our affordable housing work group until we're trying to get a timing together, so we can then get tracking on the others. So yeah, let's go ahead. I mean, I think, Ed, would you agree one D qualified resident is defined by resolution by the town of Pinedale? Or town by town council?
It should just be the qualified, qualified resident is defined by resolution by the town.
Yeah.
Above refers to this town of Pinedale, here it has referred to as the town.
So we just have to remember that one D needs to be amended to say by the town. I know. You got, I know.
Find and replace.
I literally, I did. But I, there are a few that I, it references the town of Pinedale Town Council a few times. And there's, there's a few I left as town of Pinedale.
I know.
I barely missed this one.
We can come back. This is just the template and we do amend this.
And then do we know the current AMI?
Yes, the average median income in Sublet County is roughly $25 an hour.
Okay, so for, which one was it that is? Where, I'm just trying to get a sense for what the price range is on these.
We were aiming for.
It's, it's five E.
I think we were aiming for eighteen to twenty.
It says fifteen here. But it says calculated based on a minimum of 15% adjusted for unit size and so on. But I'm just curious where that number would roughly sit. And I know there's, you know, we can't do a perfect, an exact number, but.
Hold on a second. Uh, the equivalent would be about $650.
Okay, and then what do we mean by the last sentence of E that says the maximum rate shall not exceed the affordability limit adopted by town resolution? Is that still to be determined or, okay?
So what we're going to have to do is we're going to have an AMI. And then what we're going to have to do is essentially modify it to reflect the town of Pinedale. So like, for example, the median wage within the county is roughly $24, $25. Really, the median wage in Sublet, in Pinedale is roughly $15. So we have to kind of, right now. But that could change in ten years, which is why it's a little, we want it to be a little bit flexible because in 10 years, 15 years, the median wage is 20 bucks. Then we don't want to have to be penalized necessarily for that work. This could be, that's how it can be pivoted within it. If we, and one of the things that I brought to the Business Council, I brought to the state multiple times because the Business Council was proposing new changes to their BRC funding. And I have talked to them about multiple times that it is very difficult for a town like Pinedale to qualify for grants or to get these numbers because we don't have a means to collect it. And Ed and I have been around long enough that we have tried to do informal surveys so people would tell us what their income is. But surprisingly, people don't like telling us. We need, you know, a certain percentage to tell us what it is and people don't like doing that. So we are stuck with having to essentially doctor. Now, this is based on Department of Employment and revenue numbers on employees, the number of employees. So this isn't like me just going to talking to somebody at Ridley's. This is based on what we've seen on reports from the whatever, American Community Survey, Occupational Department of Employment from the state of Wyoming. It's a very long spreadsheet.
They didn't introduce those numbers. It's a repeatable number.
Yes.
It's not something that we would have to calculate internally.
Yeah, just go and grab it.
A valid number.
Right. That's the thing about. Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Affordable Housing Deed Restriction Template to form.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, moved by council on my voice, second by council of Casiba to approve the the Affordable Housing Deed Restriction Template with the amendment of Pinedale to town. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries four zero. The next item is the exact same thing. This time it's for NC Construction LLC. We will change that one C again so that it reflects the same.
And one D.
One D.
Yep.
I move we approve the Housing Deed Restriction for Parr Avenue, Second Edition, Block 1, Lot 1 for NC Construction LLC. Pending that minor modification.
Thank you.
Sorry. You can have it.
Okay. Okay. Moved by council of Casiba, second by council of Swapper to approve the Housing Deed Restriction for Parr Avenue, Second Edition, Block 1, Lot 1 for the NC Construction LLC with the amendment of Pinedale to the town. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Congratulations, everybody. You've had your first Affordable Housing Deed Restriction. Which is going to be what, three, three units? That's right. He's got something else cooking too now, so. All right.
My understanding is both of those units are in Lot 1 and Lot 2. And then the other, the variance was approved just for two units. So the other two lots will have variance issued, but they will not be.
Right.
Restricted by any units. Is, is that correct? I wasn't hearing that, maybe.
Yes.
That was my understanding of it.
Okay. Make sure that I work with Ed.
And then I did also tell him that we would talk to him about the other, the rest of the development and getting some cost estimates for some of the instructions when you had time.
No, so just fire me now. I'll have more time with this.
All right.
We'll get it done.
I know.
Let us get past construction.
Yes, I. All right, order F1, yes, sir.
Captain.
Yeah?
He's going to have two buildings on one lot, on one lot.
One building with four units in it. Two of the units would be restricted. That's my understanding.
Okay. We might need to work on that language for the lot because this, this talks about obviously the building. A lot building. A lot, yeah, a lot per building. Maybe not quite well.
No, I think your deed restriction is fine because the template doesn't specify. This is a deed restriction for Lot 1, right? Lot 1.
It doesn't specify if there'll be two, two units.
Maybe we just need to make up units, two units, just add the descriptor, two units on Lot 1.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, I wonder if that comes into the legal description.
It specifies that there are two, two, minimum of two residential units.
Right, and that would follow.
Any exhibit in the legal.
That's right, yeah, exactly, right. That would come in the legal description, right, to follow.
Yeah.
So the wording in that allows for if, if nobody is renting those, that any, anybody else could come in and rent those. And then the next available unit would be for the affordable unit first.
Units could shift.
Right, so if that's the case, does it matter which building or which lot?
No, but it matters that there's two.
Right, it matters that there's two. And I, I was like, to your point, I was like, he's going to have however many units total. So that could be affordable unit could be in this lot and that other affordable unit could be in this lot as long as he's got two.
Because my understanding when he was here was that he was willing to allow those first two units to be available in that first building because that was going to be the first building that was built and he wanted to make them available as soon as possible.
That's right.
But I don't know that the intention was to tie his hands to always have those units be in that particular building.
Yeah.
Maybe we should put our head together, come back.
I, I think a discussion with him would be.
I, I know what you're saying, you know, we want two units in the first building that's built. But over time, after you build the next.
Yeah, it could be in a different.
It could be unit number five that's the affordable unit in block two.
This deed restriction is not going to shift as to lot.
No.
Within this lot one.
I, I see what you're saying.
So right now, the deed restriction will only be on Lot 1, Lot 2. If he wants to share the three buildings, he has to put the same deed restriction on every single lot. And that follows the deed that those properties are.
Okay.
And we could have amended, if he came back and said, hey, I've got this. Now I'd like to have the flexibility to do, we certainly can amend the deed restriction.
I do, I think it would be good to have a discussion with him to see if that was his intention because I wouldn't want to tie his hands to where that particular building always has to have the two. Because I, I felt like that was something he was doing as a courtesy to us to offer those sooner. So maybe just a discussion to see if that's what he intended.
Yeah, let's stop that. Right, I, I would agree with that. All right, moving forward, Order 732 on its third read. This is the creation of the Town of Pinedale Housing Commission.
I was going to say, do we need to change anything at all? I move then that we approve Order 732 on the third read in accordance to the Town of Pinedale, state of Wyoming, establishing the Town of Pinedale Housing Commission.
Right, moved by council of Swapper, second by council of Casiba to pass ordinance, to approve Order 732 on its third and final read. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. Next item is, we'll have to start looking for candidates for that and appointing members to that.
I feel like that's a bigger, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal, I agree. It's just, good job, guys. Okay. Uh, next item is press a petition for those.
I move that we approve the bills for August 11, 2025 at the amount of $282,566.15. Paid with checks 31658 through 31699.
Second.
All right, moved by council on my voice, second by council of Casiba to pay the bills for August 11, 2025 with an amount of $282,566.15. Checks number 316. Checks number three one six five eight through three one six nine nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss personnel. I guess there will be action. Right? There will be an action afterwards. I guess, I mean, I did. I would like to do this. I mean, I guess we leave the room live and then just we come back in a half hour.
Or however much it takes, yeah.
Yeah. Not a major action, but.
I move that we enter executive session uh, for purposes of discussing personnel.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Swapper, second by Councilman McBoyce to go into executive session for purposes of personnel. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four zero. Um, Abe, can me turn that thing off when you're done? She's surprised, let's go. Chelsea can go. All right. Chelsea and I are going to Chicago together.
Okay.
Great city.
Nice time.
Lots to do there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'll look it up.
It's a small city. I don't know if I'll know that.
Our, our room's booked. Yeah, our, our room's booked.
That's a great question.
Yeah. There's still me.
Good. Good now.
All right, now the motion to come back into the opening meeting.
I move that we enter open session again.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Swapper, second by Councilman McBoyce to come back into open meeting at six thirty-three. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, we do have one motion. Who, who, who's got it?
Yeah. Um, do you wanna do the co-lectures?
No, we're gonna do the way.
Of course.
First, for Saunders and Smith.
I move that we increase the wages for Saunders and Smith respectively to $20 and $24 an hour, as well as... Stop there. Oh, okay.
Okay. Second. Second. Moved by Councilman Swafford. Second by Councilwoman Boyce to approve the increase of Chelsea Saunders and Michelle Smith's salary to $20 an hour and $24 an hour respectively. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Second motion, Hudson.
Yep, I move that we increase all the other employees on our list to grant them a... Or do I need to name them individually?
Please.
Okay, Thomas, Rudnick, Barnum, Hanson, Carpenter, McMillan, Guinness, Lenninger, Halli, Wilson, Lorenzic, Yanni, Eversol, and Lassicki, a COLa increase.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so move by Councilman Swafford. Second by Councilman Casiba to give... Those employees, I can name them off again, those employees a COLa increase. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries also 4-0. Just for the sake of the public, that was actually budgeted within our budget, so we are in line. So.
Effective July 26.
Oh, yes, effective July 26.
Correct. For both previous motions.
Yes. All right, any other motions on the discussion? Hearing none, entertain that motion to adjourn.
I move the wager.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Casiba. We adjourn at 6:35. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-4-0. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.